We'll move on to item number seven. This is a business item. This is a concept plan for North Shore located north of Old Saratoga Road, west of 2300 West. D.R. Horton is our applicant. We'll turn the time over to Nora Shepherd for our presentation. And if our applicant wants to come forward at this time, you can. Come and join us. We'll introduce you after the presentation.
So this was discussed at your last meeting. This is a concept plan for North Shore, which would be a new mixed residential development. And the role that the concept plan plays in this context is that it accompanies the annexation agreement. So when the annexation comes into the city, a couple of things happen. We assign a zoning, and we're going to talk about that later. And then the second thing we do is a concept plan is attached to it, which just gives us, you know, general guidance as to what we envision on this property in the future, or what is envisioned by the applicant or the property owner. So the purpose of the concept plan really is an attachment to the annexation. And you are given an opportunity to comment and give the applicant your comments, applicant and staff your comments, so that as it moves forward, as it morphs into something more real, that they can try to take those comments into consideration. There were a number of comments that you already gave at your last meeting, and I included those in the staff report. But this is an opportunity, now that you've had, I emailed you the slideshow from last time, and also some additional information, and now that you've had more of an opportunity to digest all that, you may have some additional comments. If you know where the property is, north is actually that way on this lot, on this slide, I'm sorry. But it is owned by a couple of property owners, but it's known as McLaughlin Annexation. Some of the property that's included here is already within the city limits and will have to be rezoned at some point in time, and then other portions of the property will actually need to be annexed and zoned. So this is the concept plan, probably that's the best thing to sort of look at in order to give comments. This is their presentation, so if there's specific things they kind of want to look at, that would be great. I could get, hone into whatever it is that you need, but I think this site plan is probably the best slide to talk from. In terms of process, tonight you give comments, and then at the city council meeting next Tuesday, their schedule's kind of off, but they are having a council meeting next Tuesday. And at that meeting, we're going to have a work session on the concept for North Shore and the annexation agreement, discuss that a little bit in the context of the plan. And then they will also be looking at the mixed residential zone, which you'll be looking at in a work session. At your next meeting, which is April 12th, the goal is to have you forward a recommendation on the mixed residential zone, so that when it hits city council on the 17th, it can be approved for annexation and then assigned the mixed residential zone. They'll have to come in later to rezone the property that's already within the city limits, which is own egg, to that the mixed residential and, you know, there are some other things they'll need to do in order to move forward with their project. But this, that's, so that's the purpose of this concept plan. It's for you to comment on. You won't see it again. The next time you see something like it will be when they are all annexed and zoned, and they want to come in and actually submit for a neighborhood plan. We'll talk about sort of how that works at the next item. So I will just turn it over to Chriselle and Greg, and you can let me know what your comments are.
All right. Would you like to introduce yourselves now with your name and address for the record?
Greg Hawes, Somas, 4179 Riverboat Road, Salt Lake City.
Chriselle Travis, D.R. Horton, 12351 South Gateway Park Place, Draper, Utah.
All right. Did you want to add something to the presentation tonight?
No, we're just anxious to hear your comments and to talk about the language at some point, so.
All right. This is a business item. It's not a public hearing, so I'll turn it over to the planning commission for comments.
I'll start off. I want to know how we're to give any comments on a concept plan, because we judge that against the code, and we don't have a code to judge it against.
That's a good point.
They will have to, whatever, it's a good point.
I'm glad you went first.
They will have to go through, once we adopt the mixed residential zone, then we'll have to go through, there's a pretty elaborate process for a neighborhood plan. And so we will have an opportunity to look at that again. I can tell you that the mixed residential code as currently drafted will allow this, and it would be consistent with that, the code.
Senator, can I ask something in relation to that? So I don't think I've ever heard of a neighborhood plan before. Is that part of the mixed residential?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
I had a...
I'll go later.
I was, well, one of the things we wanted to incorporate this, in this, was to have some higher density, so that we could possibly have a tracks or BRT stop or something there. But we had mentioned that we probably would need parking. How are we going to accommodate that into this?
That's a good comment. But the higher residential that is most adjacent to the, where a corridor would be and, they'd have to come in and propose what parking ratio they use. And right now, we, the way the zone's written, we refer to our existing parking requirements that we place on any other developer. However, there's not, it doesn't really address specifically additional parking that might be necessary for the stop itself.
So would that be part of when UTA or whatever entity comes in later?
Yes.
And when they would have to purchase property for it, or would the city have to provide it, or?
Perhaps. I mean, there is a right of way that these folks are providing and donating to the city in order to accommodate it. And I think UTA or whatever entity, I'm, UTA really likes higher density, and of course they like some commercial. I think the neighborhood plan that the folks come in with, these folks come in with, will not have a lot of commercial. However, if they went away for some reason and another applicant, there is a provision in our zone, or, yeah, the mixed residential zone, to accommodate some additional commercial around a track.
So how would you do, is that like a conditional? Would it be, you know what I mean? Because we don't want to say that it's got to be 30%, 70% or anything like that, but we also want to allow commercial if the applicant wants to. So in that case, would it be like a conditional use?
It would be part of the neighborhood plan that's brought forward.
Okay.
So I have a question. What's the draw? I mean, let's say that you go ahead and you record this property. You get the zoning that you want, you annex, you start building. At what point do you know if you're going to get this corridor to come through or not? Do you have to build it, and then they'll come, or how does this work?
That's a good question. And we, it is shown on, you know, UTA shows it as a corridor. We showed on our master plan as a corridor. Will it happen in the next five years? No, probably not. My guess is that it will be, it may be a BRT line before it's, our bus rapid transit, before it's a tracks line. But in terms of timing...
So we were at a transit meeting just before this meeting, and this is, this is the exact same conversation we've had with them. This is the site we've located for a stop. We're showing a rail line through there, and if it's BRT that takes care of it, or a bus, or something, UTA, whatever that's going to be called in a couple of weeks, or months, or years, whoever knows, they understand that. We're putting the density, you know, along the transit route that we've planned for, and so, you know, that's, that's the issue. You know, five years, 10 years? I think we could see bus services there, you know, by the time it's constructed. I think, I think we could see some, some bus BRT type service, probably not a fully dedicated lane, but I think we could definitely be seeing some, some bus service, because it's a logical place to make a stop.
Yeah. The reason I ask is, I mean, we can't even get a bus to go to the southern half of the city, and I take the train every day, and there's a bunch of us that do, but we can't even get a bus to go over there. So to have a neighborhood based upon, you know, and its density, based upon a future route for a bus or something, I mean, we have neighborhoods already made, and there's nobody coming down, nobody's servicing it.
Yeah, and I had that conversation with the route manager tonight, and her response was rather than having full-size buses, they're looking at trying to get smaller buses, that's, I hate to say it, but, you know, 15 passenger condo lines running multiple routes in the city on regular basis, because they know they're not going to fill a bus, but if they have alternate types of transportation, they would be able to fill those and get those moving. So the southern end of the city, that's exactly what we're talking about. I pled for a paratransit bus or something, you know, just so that we can start, you know, getting some, some regular commuter traffic taken care of, and they're looking at that.
The next question is, like, the southern half of the city is really halfway in between American Fork and Lehigh's train station. Basically, they've routed all of their bus traffic that used to be direct down to the cities or south to the trains. And so who's to say that you want to go over to American Fork or Lehigh, and still you've got a neighborhood that's coming in that's wanting this bus traffic, but maybe people don't want to go to American Fork, then maybe they want to go to Lehigh. So it's just a lot of questions I had about that. And whether, you know, you build it and it'll come, I don't know, so.
This is our field of dreams.
Right. Oh, is there a cornfield there?
I have a comment. On, oh, shoot. So mine's page 140 of the staff packet, but, let me find it, sorry. Oh, okay. So on page two...
Yes.
The second paragraph, it says, this is the second sentence, "The first zone they found that would allow this would be the planning commission zone."
Oh.
Wait a minute, we get our own zone?
Yeah.
There's a conflict of interest.
So for clarification, it's obviously. Then I had a question on that map, or that drawing. See the upper right-hand corner where the street just curves around? There's that little triangle of, yeah, what happens to that?
It'll be a monumentation. It'll be part of our open space. Oh, are you talking, which, you're on the south end?
No, I'm talking about the northeast, well, no, I'm sorry.
Southeast.
Yeah, southeast, yes.
On the other corner?
Yeah, that little triangle there. So you said it's going to be open?
Well, it's actually not part of our project. It's, it'll just remain, it's got one of your well sites, and then it's owned partially by the church and a couple of other people.
Okay, so that's not, you know how you were talking about dedicating that marina area to us? Is that little piece also part of that, or you're just saying it's not even part of the?
It's not part of the project. It's just green. We can gray that out so that it doesn't cause confusion.
Oh, I see. Okay. So the city owns that, and then it just stays?
No.
It's privately owned.
The roadway that you see is, is going to the public workshops.
Uh huh.
So that roadway goes to the public workshops, but that, that piece is not under their control.
Okay.
Sure, they'd love it to be, but it's not.
So it just stays in its natural? Okay.
Who owns the well?
We own the well.
And you lease that?
No.
You just use the well on their land?
Turn on your faucet, and that well is serving, serving you.
All right, I'm getting thirsty.
But one of the things that we will require, we will require, once any plan comes forward, is access to our well sites, because right now there's one that is actually not even, we own property, but the well site's not. So we're adjusting that, and then we will be, so.
So I have a few comments too, because same reasons that Commissioner Steele gave, I didn't have anything to really apply or look. I'm sorry, I'm so coin-operated, but that's what I've been trained to do now, and just without, without, yeah, code, it's just, yeah, it looks good.
Any other comments or feedback?
Of course. And I know, you go.
I love the overall concept. I'm really excited about it. I said that in work session, and I'll say it again. I have a couple of questions about some of the potential amenities you're listing, like a splash pad, the bike track, the dog park, even the lighthouses with their height, you might run into some, I don't know, will they run into anything? What does it take to get those things? Like a dog park? What does it take to get a dog park in your community? Like, what will they have to go through to get that, and the splash pad as well?
It would be part of the open space amenity package that's required for, with the neighborhood. And that's one of the things that is still kind of an item that we're discussing with the MR zone. We are proposing that the applicants in the MR zone be required to go through our open space, which talks about minimum areas, there are two comments, one is acreage, and there may actually be some language to provide a little bit of flexibility, because many of the things that are being proposed and that are in, like legacy farms, don't fit into the nice little categories that we have. So there will be some discretion in that. We certainly want to allow for legacy farm type. And I don't think they're going to have an issue with the number of, but we're still working through that, and there is language in the contract that provides some. Most important thing is that it be adequate and provide a variety of different recreational amenities, and that it all be tied together in a neighborhood. Just what they did with legacy farms. That's kind of the basis of the open space.
If I could interject a thought, and it's kind of fun to be able to look back when Legacy Farms was coming in, and I know this isn't Legacy Farms, but we wondered, what the heck is a terrapack, and how is it going to work? And if you look at it now, it's immensely successful. It's an amazing amenity, and it's just something that we didn't even have on our radar. And so we want to allow the development community to innovate and to create things that are contemporary with the changing times, and not just go back to the typical totlot, plastic playground structure. And so I think that as we continue to evolve with our amenities package applications, we want to look for things that will create community elements, tie into it, meet the recreational needs of their communities, and continue to build. So to your point, we don't see it as, as a box that is extremely restrictive. We're saying, great, let's amend the spreadsheet and add points for, you know, like the hammock, the hammock park components and different things like that.
Yeah, and I like that too, and I even haven't been in like the first batch of homes that moved in. When I saw the terrapack, I'm like, oh, where are all these pipes and ropes? This is weird. But people hang out there all the time, all day long. You see families going over there and kids playing, and it's just so great. So, and, yeah, it's something we might not have thought of before. So I just want to make sure that if you want all these things to happen, and you're including them in your sales package, hopefully they get to come to fruition, and you don't have homeowners coming in, in phase three, thinking they were going to get a splash pad, and they haven't gotten one.
No, we understand that, and that's part of why we're still working on that. We do have some new things coming forward. You've seen a dog park, hammock park. We want to use, we've thought about old sailboats, retrofitting those so that they could be turned into a playground, but...
Which is what the tractors are.
Yeah, they're not specifically listed in your categories, like she said.
I miss you a boat, you want to buy it?
Be your happiest day, right?
New Jersey, you'd have to go get it.
So, so we appreciate that comment, and we've filled out the spreadsheet, and we're feeling a little bit more comfortable. There are some items that we, that we think that need to be included, or some language that would allow that flexibility to happen, that is not there. So this is still a work in progress, but we appreciate your comment.
Cool. Good.
So I like the idea that you're, you have, so you're just going to give the land for this marina to the city?
We're going to exchange the land for open space credits and impact fees. That's part of our annexation agreement, which is being reviewed by the city staff.
And then the city, how are you going to hold the city to dredging it out and making it useful?
They won't.
What can you do?
We're still negotiating all, it's still all an open book. This is very preliminary, but as Nora said, the annexation agreement will come before you, as well as our preliminary plaits, all those things, so there will be other opportunities to have discussions for those kinds of things.
So to comment on that, and I appreciate it, this is an amazing amenity. For years as a city, we've been eyeing it. One of the things that we will probably be doing is trying to leverage the land donation that we get from the developer to, to match state funds, and, and look for ways that we can fund this using state resources, you know, as an amenity for the state, you know, the state lake and, and state trust lands. And so we're going to be looking at, at many different ways to do it. So it is something that we are very passionate about, but we certainly want to leverage those dollars the very best that we can, and try and get as much state funding as possible for the construction of that, that amenity.
All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Steele?
Just keep the nautical theme, please. I just love that.
You're all over it.
Lighthouse and center of the windmill.
Well, I'll start with that first. Do we know what height limitations we have, since this is so close to the...
Sea Park?
Our sea park, I guess is the name of it. The fly drones and model planes and...
We would, we'll need to obviously check with FAA. I don't know what kinds of regulations they have that would, that would impact the development on this particular. What's proposed in the MR zone right now is 45 feet.
I know.
Plus, you know, some exceptions for architectural amenities, but, you know, but this particular piece probably may be further restricted.
Okay, the 45, I think that we're okay with 35, but I'm wondering about the 45, and it may be just fine. I don't fly model planes.
Well, also, the MR, this zone can be somewhere else. So if any, I guess any development that's going to be close to the RC field, we should probably get it on a case-by-case basis, probably, yeah.
And this is one that just kind of came out of left field to me, because I had understood that you were not using the land that's around the marina for anything other than you were going to dedicate it. It wasn't going to go and be credited towards some of your open space. And then you said what you did, and how is that working? I mean, are you...
That's changed a little bit. That's evolved over the last few weeks.
Well, I don't know that it's, it's changed. That's always been our intent. I don't know that it's ever been formalized and written down, so that it's understood clearly by everyone what the intent was. But it's always been our intent to use that land for the benefit of the city, as well as us receive, you know, park impact fee credits for the land donation that we're making. That's, that's entitled to us through the state code.
Okay, impact fees is one thing, but you're not reducing your acreage for...
No. Oh, no. No, no. We'll still, still meet our open space, yes.
Okay. I've looked at this. Up in the upper southeast corner, there is a structure. Is that for a church?
Yes.
You only proposing one?
We met today with the church meeting house people. You guys grow well, you have big families. They are actually slated to purchase something in 2019, so we've begun that process. They think this is a good location. We'll formalize it as best we can. He was going to go back and evaluate whether it needs to be another church house or a stake center.
So you'll have two?
Possibly. It'll, it'll come back from them, whether or not the needs there and the timeframe. We may be done developing before that demand for that second building comes in. So that, those were, we're still working through that process with them.
Okay. Okay, and with 1,100 units, what, have you talked with the school district?
Yes, we have.
What are they saying?
They're evaluating as well. They may have a need. We thought once or twice that they might need a junior high, but they are purchasing junior high land elsewhere in the city, and so it's looking more like an elementary school location could, could go somewhere near this. We're negotiating with other landowners that are adjacent to this. It would be a slower process, so that we can bring what's needed for this community. But at this point, they're, nothing's written. So we're still very preliminary, but we are having those talks.
But it wouldn't be in the neighborhood like Springside is?
Well, no, but, but we are talking to adjacent property owners to the north, and to the, to the south, and to the east, and to the west.
Are you, in that respect, are you thinking that it would go on your property, or do you, are you trying to get somebody else to take it?
Well, we'd like to expand this development, if possible, as well. So that's why we're still negotiating and talking to other property owners. Those accommodations could be met in other locations.
Well, I see that you've done FEMA study, because I was out there, and I see that the fill is already going in, and it's already pretty high. So I'm, I'm pretty sure you have done the FEMA study that I asked for way back when. Have you done any of the geotechnical studies?
Yes, yes.
And who has those?
We haven't made a submitted to the city yet for plaits, so those geotechnical reports will come forward with those applications.
And I guess soils reports will come at that time.
Right.
Have you done a traffic study?
We will be getting one once we know we have the zone.
Okay.
We will get one once we know that we've got the zone and there's a requirement for one.
Okay. Now, you're proposing 1,100 units, and you heard last week, or two weeks ago, when we were talking about it, I know I wasn't the only one that asked for some commercial, and I see no changes that would make me think that you, you may have heard it, but I'm not sure you listened.
It's one, well, it's one thing to want commercial, but whether the market will sustain it or not, it's a different story. So if, if you talk to actual retailers who are looking for space on the, on the ground, this is the farthest place in their mind from where a viable piece of commercial would go.
I'm going to read the...
You want to disagree with me?
Yes, I do. It's interesting. I have real estate ad that I get from California, and what they say is, where is it? It's 1,000 homes within walking distance, and it's a little center. It's not big. It's not like University Mall. It's a little center that has, I think, a...
Looks like a strip mall.
Yeah, it's dressed up one. It's got a, I think, a pizza place, and it's got a hair salon, an exercise place, maybe, just a small something. And what I'm afraid of is you, you're putting that many people out there, and with no commercial, that means they're going to have to drive everywhere. That increases our traffic problems, and it increases our pollution. And so to me, especially if you're planning on transit, even though it's, won't be here for five years, 10 years, we need to have the, have that delineated before we go any further. further. So, we protect a place for commercial. And I know, I've been in meetings with you where we've talked about the fact that in these planned communities, that the interior commercial sites don't normally do well. But I think if you have some near the transit stop, that I think there will be a need. And I'm disappointed, I'm not seeing something that has been delineated. I mentioned, and I don't know, maybe you were the one had seen it, Beaverton Round, at the transit stop in Beaverton, they have apartments. It used to be ugly, 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 but now they've made it pretty. And people can walk out the door of their apartment building and hop on whatever transit is there. And it would make sense, if they're going to do that, they may not even have a car. And so, they need, need some of the services there, that they don't have to try to find a bus to go get. So, and I really, I'll tell you, if it comes back to us, and you're asking me to approve it without that, at least a space reserved for it, now you get it all built, and you still don't have a demand for it, then we can talk. But at least, right now, let's plan for some.
So you would suggest we leave a vacant parcel, hoping and praying that tracks actually does happen, or BRT does happen? And, and, and just, just wait? Just keep something vacant?
Yes, because I think at this point, with the bus coming sooner, you've, you're going to have a need for, as I say, it doesn't have to be big, but it does need to provide some services. You're putting 1,100 homes out there, and at an average of, well, you're not going to have quite as many, because you've got some apartments, but say, even three people per unit, you're going to have a lot of people there. And when you, and I'm trying to estimate low rather than high, so I'm going to say eight trips per unit, per day. That's a lot of traffic.
Didn't you mention that you were going to have product that had flex space in the, so I wonder if those kinds of homes will be clustered in such a place where they, you could still build, you could still sell them, people could still occupy them, but if that, if and when that transit stop comes, that they could convert their flex space into commercial property, or, I mean, not commercial property, I'm sorry, but into businesses or something that can service the, is that your intent?
Yes, so the, I don't know what color brown to call them. The long old Saratoga Road, those are, those have that flex space. There's also a cluster right next to the apartments, just to the north, that, that space to the north, I don't have the cursor.
But I brought up last time, you've got some challenges.
Correct.
Because of the disability laws. And you're going to need to provide, and you mentioned you would have a three-foot door in the bathroom. You know, that bathroom has to be where you can turn a wheelchair around the radius, and it used to be five feet, I think it's increased. And then, you're going to need a ramp, or no steps, and then you're going to need extra parking. And so, there's a lot to be, I understand that that seems like a good, good deal, but it can cause some issues. And I don't see that when, where you've got those, that you've planned to take any space for extra parking.
Boyd Martin, DeR Horton, Draper, Utah. You bring up some good, some good points, but there's a lot to go, and there's a lot of detail to figure out. You have a very good building department. They wouldn't let me build anything that's not to code. They wouldn't, even ADA code, if that's so required, they'll take care of that, they're very good at that. As far as the commercial, you know, we're partnered right now with the Gardner Company, who's one of the largest commercial in the Intermountain West. We're also friends with the Boyer Company. I've talked to some of these folks a little bit, and even some of the smaller, more regional commercial guys, all of them gave me a very definite no. This is not where, they, they're not interested in commercial here. You have Pioneer Crossing, you've got Redwood Road. They're not going to go off-track and go put a McDonald's and a Starbucks and whatever else you want here. But I did, I did hear you, and we are listening. So, if there's some kind of a compromise we can come up with, we just have to be sensitive to market forces, though. We can't pretend that, that we're going to create a space for a restaurant, when nobody is ever going to do a restaurant there. So, we're just asking for reasonability. It's still early on, there's still a lot of detail to figure out, as far as, you know, ADA and so forth, and we're working on that, and we'll work with you. We're just, you know, we're here to, to see if we can get a code and a plan moved up, and then we can solidify and then start, start down the path. But, you know, to start focusing in too much on the nitty-gritty line-item detail, it's just, it's premature right now. But we, I want you to know, we did hear you, and we're listening. We're not just saying pound sand. We're here to say, okay, but let's, let's be reasonable together. Let's compromise. But it just can't be, I've got to take four acres and make a commercial spot that'll grow weeds for seven years, and then, and then the value may go away, and I just have to walk away from the whole project to begin with.
Well, after you're built, after the project's built, you're going to be walking away anyway. That's, that's, that's what you do. So, that's what I would do, if I were a developer, and that's not a bad thing. So, is there anything else that we have, that we can discuss that we haven't talked about previously?
Well, I want to go a little further with that. You're, if you don't provide something, some commercial, you're asking us to go against our general plan. And I realize it's, you know, an advisory document, but it is very clear that when you put higher-density housing, it needs to be closer to commercial and healthcare, offices, shopping. I realize you can't put all of that in your project. One thing you might think about is some shops on the first floor of your apartment building and apartments above. That, you know, that might be a solution. I just don't want us not to take this opportunity, and you'll come back and say, well, it wasn't in the original agreement, so we don't have to. I just, I don't want that to happen.
Sure.
And let me look at my notes again.
And that's something we certainly can work, stress through. I mean, in Salt Lake City, we fought this battle all the time, you know, trying to require with apartments, because there are a lot of apartments going first-floor commercial. Well, it's, it's a chicken-and-egg thing, that they can have it there, but it sits vacant until there's a... And so, what we, what we've looked at is sort of a flex space. So, short-term, it's sales office and lobby space and all those kinds of things, and longer-term, it could turn into commercials. So, that might be something that we...
There's all kinds of things that can be done. We just have to, I just want you, as developers, to know that this is a concern, when you put that many people away from the services that we have, because that means more traffic on an already crowded road. And that brings me to the next question.
And we hear you. I don't disagree. The, it's the application that I'm struggling with. We have reached out, we have talked, we've debated it a lot. How do we satisfy what you're after and still make this an economically viable community for us?
All right, so we've already heard each other on the commercial, let's move on to the next.
Okay. The roads. What are you planning to widen, and how far are you planning to widen it?
Well, we haven't gotten that far with the city engineers. We haven't made those applications. Where we would dedicate any extra portions of 2300 West or Old Saratoga Road, whichever way you look at it, that are adjacent to our properties, we will comply with any of the regulations and standards that are in your current Title 19.
I will ask Gordon, Old Saratoga Road is going to, if they widen it, that's great, it needs it, but then it's going to bottleneck and then widen out again. How can, there's a nexus, because they're creating the population, but how do you see it?
Where do you envision the bottleneck? I'm not sure which, where you're talking about.
Well, I'd have to get a city map in front of me, but one of these roads goes over to Bucklawnman.
180 feet.
180 feet.
Okay.
One thing they are anticipating, at our request and at the Transportation Master Plan, is that corridor about, if you're going from right to left, about a fourth of the way into the project, you see a corridor through there. Eventually, that's, that's Pony Express. That'll go through there.
Okay, will that be a road and a transit, mass transit, or will it be just a...
Yes, that's the, that's the 180-foot corridor that Mark is talking about, and...
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, so it'll be 100? What you'll see in our Transportation Master Plan, that we're trying to update, you'll see the 180-foot corridor with some space in the middle, where it would begin with BRT, in hopes that rail would come.
What's the largest road that you can put in there? I mean, how wide could you make it? Right, but how wide? Could it be three lanes each way? What could it be?
Like seven lanes. It's seven lanes with tracks in the middle and parking. We've done a couple of cross-sections and given them to the city to use for these studies and things, and shown the progression of how it, how it starts as our two-lane road and can be widened and expanded through time to meet the transit needs.
We've had jokes before in the past about Bream Young planning, but I think this is appropriate, that we have a lot of needs in the future for a lot of egress and...
I might, I might...
Yes.
That's good. Thank you, Mark.
I might add, there was a question about widths of streets on the interior. With their application, there will be a traffic impact study that will talk about volumes. And if it so happens that a volume on one of their interior streets exceeds the capacity of a local street, well, then they'll upsize that, but that remains to be seen with their study.
And I have one question left.
One question left.
Is the property that's being dedicated to the city, is it being used to calculate your density?
Not for our net density, no.
Actually, I have one more. How are we with water, with the culinary water and secondary water for this development?
They're close enough to the lake.
Yeah.
We've got three well sites right there. We've got plenty of water.
So, we're...
Not be potable, but...
We've also discovered a few more.
So, we're equipping a well to the north there, and we're bringing other infrastructure through here. There's already a good capacity with the drinking water system, and so we'll be bringing capacity via that well, just to the north of this project, and main lines that will come, that will serve...
To answer your question more directly, I believe there's some water rights that come with the property, that they'd be dedicating to the city. Currently, there's no secondary water system out in that area. We've already discussed with them, building some master infrastructure from 400 South, and bringing it across the bridge, and bringing it over to this area. So, there, there will be a tremendous amount of infrastructure that's going to need to get built. But as far as the water rights go, I believe we do have credits in the system, or have the opportunity to bring credits into the system from the landowner. And then, there's always Central Utah Water, yeah, for culinary purposes, if necessary.
Thank you.
Great.
Great.
How was that?
That wasn't bad.
Okay, good. Thank you for your time tonight.
Problem.
All right.
We're up on the next one, so we'll just stay here.
You can just stay right there. Item number eight. Item number eight, this is a work session, mixed residential zone, city-initiated. Nora, time is yours.
Okay, so, I just sent out this afternoon, and I have up on the screen some draft, very draft amendments, to create the mixed residential zone. Now, what I did, that I think I explained, is, they, they came up with sort of what they thought they wanted and what would fit their development. And so, what I did is I went back and tried to figure out how this type of zone would fit into our existing code. And my marching orders were really to make sure that it acted like a zone, and that it could be applied to property, just like a normal zone, and that it wasn't like the planned community, district area planned, community planned, village planned zone, which says that, you know, the zone changes only with a really specific development plan. So, the mixed residential zone could be applied theoretically to any piece of property. And when it develops, then an applicant would have to come forward with a really detailed, what we're calling a neighborhood plan, which includes, you know, information on blotting types and housing types and all those kinds of things. And whenever possible, I referred back in the standards and submission requirements, I refer back to, I have the mouse. Refer back to the, our, sections of our existing code, so that, as much as...
You feel it only over there.
So, as much as possible, as much as possible, it's standardized similar to our existing code. So, losing it, I don't know. There it is. So, the first part is the existing code, and just how it would fit in, add it at a separate section. Our code is a little bit schizophrenic in the way it handles sort of these different zones. For example, the mixed waterfront zone is a zone which is in 19.04, which establishes zones and land use categories. However, the planned community zone, and the PUD zone, and some of the other zones are their whole, their whole separate chapters. So, what I decided was to include it in the general 19.04, which describes the zones. Okay, so, one of the things that we may look at, and I don't know if this will come forward as a recommendation or not, but I kind of put this here as a placeholder, is whether or not we want to add, also add a land use classification in our, in our general plan. That would probably come later, but I at least wanted to put in here to think about it. So, this would be an additional zone in the category that deals with agriculture and residential zones. Let's see, I've put it in there. And there's, these things would apply to that zone along, along with every other zone. So, 190406 talks about the agriculture and residential zones, and we'd add a little section that talks about the mixed residential zone. And I'm not asking for feedback on specific language or anything, I'm just trying to give you an introduction, and then you can email me anytime, or call me, or we can sit down with coffee, or, you know, soda or something, and go through, go through questions you might have, because I know it's kind of a lot. So then, I went through and added a category to the land use tables, not very well in terms of formatting, but at least you get the picture. When it says NP, that means per neighborhood plan. So, it's, it's with the standards, and then also, and the uses that are included. And I have included as conditional uses or permitted uses, some of those kinds of support uses that you would normally see in a neighborhood, in order to... uses that you would normally see in a neighborhood in order to- Oh, I'm one. But anyway. Anyway, you know, schools, charter schools, all those kinds of things. And there are some things like residential facilities for elderly persons, parks, playgrounds, the public buildings, preschool that's a conditional use. So those, it's just similar to the other residential zones.
Are you, are you getting rid of the PUD and the, and the Plan, Plan Community, the Plan Community?
We don't use the PUD anymore.
Right. So-
The Plan Community will likely have to stay on the books because we have the huge district area plan, the city center district area plan.
Yeah, that's true.
So until or unless that's replaced by something, it'll have to stay on the books.
Okay. But the idea, okay.
But we have to get away from those.
Okay. So we're in this iteration, but the idea is to get rid of them eventually. Is that, is that-
Yeah. We don't want to grant any more.
Right. Okay.
But we'll need to leave it in the code in order to deal with what we already have. Okay. So we go through that. The rest of this section is for the commercial stuff, which does not apply. And then at the end, what I did is wrote a new chapter. And it's not unlike the mixed waterfront zone, where, you know, if there are things that are different than the other zones, we call it out and specify it. So that's what the mixed residential zone does. We start with intent and purpose, talk about a neighborhood plan being required. That's kind of the core. So once a zone, once something is zoned MR, in order to develop it, they'd have to come in with a neighborhood plan. It talks about the intent and then a development agreement would be required ultimately. Talks about density, process. It would be Planning Commission conducting a public hearing, making a recommendation to City Council. City Council approving that neighborhood plan. That's all subject to change as we are constantly kind of reevaluating our processes. And then they'd have to come back, of course, with preliminary and final plans for each of the pieces. Submission requirements, I tried to stick to things that we require in similar situations like concept plans. So this is sort of a hybrid of a number of different project requirements. It includes a lotting plan, which is new. And another really key component is, is the character and theming plan. Sort of the whole, the whole reason, the whole purpose behind this zone is so that this 50-acre-plus neighborhood will be cohesive and will be themed and will feel like one community. So that's kind of the overriding intent. And then we go into the development standards. So talk about the lotting plan again, what the street networks need to say, what the open space requirements are. Right now, we refer to 1919 for open space. I have put in some, only we want it to be better than that because we want all of the open space to create, you know, hierarchy for various users and also be consistent with the theme and character of the neighborhood.
So how would you, okay, if we have different types of product and densities within the zone, how then do you figure out the open space? I mean, I guess the open space will be applied towards the entire parcel or the entire development?
Yeah.
Even though a particular area like apartments or, you know, whatever, multifamily, might not have the open space that it would normally have if it were a separate zone or part of a separate, or density.
Well, the hope is that enough, different kinds of open space would be provided in appropriate locations so that everybody would be served. And that's what this text tries to add. But it would be up to us in reviewing the neighborhood plan to make sure that that's the case.
Okay. So in the, one of the previous applicants meant, there was some discussion about HOA, you know, if this apartment had the open space amenity or, or not open, had an amenity, but then the homes didn't, is there going to be an HOA? And he said, no. So in the case where it's, where the mixed development is in one zone, then what do we do about HOA-type of things where some folks will have access to the open space or to the amenity and others don't? You know what I mean?
My understanding-
How do you create that cohesive-
The way that this is written-
Yeah.
Is that everybody would be under kind of one master homeowner association.
Okay.
And there may be sub-associations, but then most of the amenities would be available.
To everybody.
To anyone. That's the intent.
Okay.
But if I could comment on that, like in the case of SSD, we don't regulate that as a city. That's kind of their baby.
Their deal.
It's their deal. It's, it's whatever amenities package those individual people are buying into. And so I don't know that from a market force standpoint, we as a city should be dictating how those kind of HOA amenities would be utilized.
Well, I guess, yeah. I'm not trying to dictate that, but I guess when SSD was, was first developed before the HOA was there, if we had our code today, we would still apply our open space requirements, amenity requirements and all that, right? And then, so that's all good. But then if it's a mixed development and you've got apartments or multifamily housing and then you've got, you know, maybe quarter acre lots, single-family homes, then how, how do you keep that integrity, community feeling while the same, while certain areas will have less open space or amenities than others? So before, with SSD, it's all one type of, it was all one zone. Whereas with the, that previous applicant where they have an apartment and then they have single-family homes, they said that, no, there won't be an HOA, so they can't really then use each other's amenities even though it's all part of one. That's, I'm just wondering how that's going to work through a zone.
And that kind of confused me a little bit because how could you not have an HOA, but there's a pool within walking distance?
Yeah.
They're going to try and use it. But in Legacy Farms, there are tiered HOA fees. Townhomes pay something different than the single-family homes, but I can walk to any amenity in our neighborhood. Doesn't mean that I don't have access to it just because I'm not close to it or I'm paying a higher or lower HOA fee.
Okay. So is that the idea of how it would work? Okay. Because I'm not familiar with that concept.
And again, if some developer comes in and wants to do something different, I mean, Dr. Horton's not the only developer in the world. And so we want to make this, we want to make this, we want to make it usable for other people who have a different model. And so that's why some of the, you know, the language encourages creativity and that would all be, all those things would all be established in the neighborhood plan. So if they want to, if a developer wants to come in and do the associations, then the open space maintenance and all that chunks, then we would deal with it as part of the neighborhood plan. And then it would be up to them to-
But, but going back to the SSD example, the Fairway Townhomes actually has a very robust, I believe they have a splash pad inside the townhomes and things of that nature. So I, I think the market will adjust for that and provide amenities because again, they want to provide a good product, it's meeting the needs of their community. And as you get more compact, they're going to want to include those types of things for their residents.
Actually, yeah. You're right. That's true. Because there are areas where a clubhouse was built and those folks, even though they're in the SSD, they pay the regular HOA fee and then they pay an additional one for that. So I guess you're right. I guess there is a model for that kind of development.
And, and I've included some, some language that allows for some variation in the open space amenity. It says variations of required amenities will be considered if necessary to achieve the desired neighborhood theme. So there's some flexibility built in. Signs is somewhat similar. We're going back to our sign regulations. They asked that sometimes a community feature with a logo, which we interpret as a sign, wants to be a little taller. And so I've, I've added some language about that. Architectural standards, we're referring to our architectural standards that already exist. But we added some additional language to make, to make sure that there's even more continuity in the community. And then I added some language about sometimes, yeah, I did. There may be a time like Legacy Farms, for example, where the siding material is basically one material and one color. There's some different textures. And so we don't want to prohibit that if it meets with the theme and the character of the neighborhood. Like, you know, it's a farm neighborhood, so they want a little farmhouse look. And that's great. So we don't want to prohibit that either by forcing, forcing something to be maybe too busy for what the character theme is going to be. I probably will add some language about not having everything all stucco. I think that that's something that we would want to talk about. Landscaping and fencing, again, I refer back to, yeah. Well, not everybody, the City Council is not wild about all stucco, and so they may have a comment about that. I don't know.
Sorry, I'm from Southern California. And stucco, stuccoed houses were the best, were the nicer homes, so.
I understand. Unfortunately, they're not really using the real stucco anymore. They're using the EFA system, which is not durable. It's not terribly durable. I live in a, our apartment building in Salt Lake City, and it's, the building's three years old and it's falling apart. I mean, difficult, but we can talk about durable materials. Our code talks about durable. Landscaping, it's the same thing, but also with some language that talks about modification. Could, you know, could happen if it doesn't result in the, in less landscaping. In some cases, it may be beneficial to slightly reduce plant size in exchange for plants. So it provides a little bit of flexibility. Building height, again, what is being proposed is 45 feet, but that's, we can talk about that. I think if we're encouraging a mix of housing types, three-story apartments are pretty standard and those would- And then I, an additional section that requires, allows for additional building height for a architectural feature, but the intent is not to allow additional square, living square foot. It would just be for an architectural feature. Support uses, Sandy, you would want to take a look at this language. I tried to say, you know, you, well, it talks about including churches and schools and requiring consultation with the providers, the church or the school. Non-resident, about the location of non-residential uses. Neighborhood plan containing planned transit with a stop, additional commercial uses shall be considered to support the future transit stop. And then just all of the improvements that are normally- So that's what I did. We met, I mean, the Dr. Horton folks came up with some really great ideas and some of the basic language. And in trying to put some of their stuff into here, some of their stuff, certainly the level of detail, isn't in this code. And that would be, it doesn't preclude them from adding it, then it would be in the neighborhood plan, which is the more detailed document. The neighbor, this is really just a zoning, the neighborhood plan would be fairly detailed, again, still at a conceptual level, but they would at least give us examples of the types of products that they want and general building heights and densities and all those.
Would that be like the village plans that we saw?
Kind of. More like a community plan.
One of the things I didn't like about the Plan Communities or the PUDs were, is all the exceptions that were granted vis a vis our code. And I was just wondering, so when you have mixed product types, how do you, how do you set like a setback? You know, or do we have to go into detail of each type of possible housing product or, I mean, residential product? Or, you know, or do we not even set a setback for, for this zone?
What I've put in here now is it would refer back to the neighborhood plan. And the code now allows, you know, allows, it has minimum setbacks and then allows, already allows for exceptions itself for lot line and cottages and-
Yeah. If it, I mean, if exceptions are allowed in the code, then I have no problem with those exceptions. It's when the exception is not in the code, that's, that's the issue. But of course, it's still allowed because it's part of the Plan Community or the PUD. But it just seems like if we have setbacks in the city, for whatever reason we created them, then they have to be at least somehow followed as much as we can or we get rid of them. Because it doesn't, it doesn't matter. If we're going to have, you know, thousands of houses that don't, especially because Plan Communities were large anyway, 500 acres or more, then we're going to have thousands of houses that don't follow the code, then what's the point of the code?
I understand.
You know what I mean?
And what, as much as, that's why as much as possible, I tried to use standards in the existing code.
Yeah.
But in order to encourage innovation and a real mix of uses-
Right.
It's kind of hard to put in specific minimum setbacks.
I agree.
There'll be all different kinds of housing types.
Right.
I can add a little bit to that, just to help clarify in terms of what our thinking has been relative to that issue.
Before you do, could you introduce yourself?
Absolutely.
Name and address.
My name's Mike Hathaway. I'm with Michael Baker International in Midvale, Utah.
Well, Boyd was there and then Boyd slipped out and then no. Mike, right?
Yeah. We did a-
Thank you.
Yeah. I, boy, thank you. I appreciate that. So the issue as it pertains to a mixed residential neighborhood is that you're, I'm going to use some analogy terminology to kind of help illustrate. Your canvas is the lot. And it's really the starting point and the determining factor of what you can do based on the issue of how the lot is regulated. So in a mixed residential standpoint, there has to be a, an ability to be able to provide the flexibility that Nora's talking about within the context of the nature of the building lots as they're being provided within the plan. So what, what we've done is, and the code actually references the term, is that, that we will generate different lot types, that you will see the standards for each of the lot types. So, you know, arbitrarily, we'll say there's a lot type one through a lot type four. And those lot types will allow for a housing product emission based on the standards that are associated with the lot. And the reason that, that works well is, is one, we're talking about a larger piece of ground that's, that's harder to nail down, the specifics for an absorption period that could last more than a real estate cycle. Secondly, there's, there's the issue of, there's the issue of going from macro detail into the micro detail. And as you get into the micro detail, it becomes a lot more challenging. So what we're trying to do is account for the fact that we don't want all of the decisions to be front-loaded, but we want the detail as to how the decisions are going to be made. So what you'll be able to see when a neighborhood plan comes in is the detail of what the lot types will actually allow. And then the detail as to how they're applied will come in with the conceptual lotting plan. Does that make sense? So you're getting the detail, it's just within the context of stages as the, as the decision-making becomes a lot, a lot more, a lot more fixed as you're going from liquid to solid, I guess.
Well, see, okay, and I appreciate that explanation because it shows that, of course, you are looking at economic, you know, financial feasibility, you're looking at physical feasibility of how big the, the unit has to be on that particular parcel of land, all that, which is great because that's, that's data. It's, it's more or less scientific. You know, at least you have data.
Yeah.
So I guess my, my issue, actually, I don't have an issue. So that explains how potentially setbacks and such will be calculated for the mixed residential. But if, say for example, then, that for a particular type of housing unit or type of unit, that instead of what our current code says for, for a certain zone, instead of 20 feet, your calculations come to, it makes the most sense to have it 15 feet for a setback, for a rear setback, let's say. Well, if that's the case, then our other zone that says 20 makes no sense because we kind of picked it for whatever reason and it wasn't scientific, or, you know, it probably wasn't as detailed with data as this was. So if that's the case, why, that's what I'm saying, is if we have thousands of units that don't have a particular setback, and for those developers that did go to the trouble of figuring out what's the most, you know, what's the best balance, that is probably a better setback than what we have in the other zones. Because it's not fair for- in the other zones, because it's not fair for a developer who could only do a R, you know, 3, whatever, to have to be forced into the setback when the actual money and everything else that's... And the physicality of the lot makes sense to do it, you know, with their... To have their setback. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, those are questions that you may work through as it pertains to the code as a whole.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
But I think what you're suggesting is an apples and oranges situation, in that the reason that we're even having the discussion about a mixed residential code is you have no zoning that allows for multiple products within the same neighborhood.
Right. No, I agree, but I'm just saying that there are zones that allow that one particular type of product, in which case, if in your zone... If in the mixed residential zone, that one particular product has a setback of 15 feet, whereas in our single zone, that same product has a setback of 20 feet, then yours should be the one that applies, because you put some data and figured out what it should be, whereas we just kind of 20 feet.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that's...
Yeah, maybe, maybe not. But that's the question I'm raising to the planning staff.
And there is some flexibility even in our existing zones. You know, there's... You can do other things if approved specifically that allows some of that flexibility. But you're right. I mean, the traditional zone with the setbacks and all those kinds of things sort of create one type of product, and that product works really well around here, and we don't want to not have that kind of product, but we want to be able to allow different kinds of products.
Understood.
So, but I think your point's well taken, and in a number of cases, some of the language that's in the MR zone, we think eventually should be reflected in the rest of the code. You know, like, I think we need to, you know, I want to change at some point our open space matrix to include different kinds of improvements and architectural guidelines. I think some of the things that they've brought up and that we've brought up through this process probably would be a good idea to go back and relook at our architectural guidelines. But at this point, we're not trying to redo the whole code.
Right. It's evolving.
Right. And it may be that...
Thanks to...
Yeah, and it may be, you know, when we go back and look at the whole code and incorporate some of this, like, these sections may not even be necessary.
Right.
But to try to get it done and a code adopted, we're kind of doing it.
Okay.
I'd like to step back just for a second and ask you a couple of questions. Mike, you're the code guy, right? So, have you had a chance to take a look at this mixed residential zone that's proposed?
Yes.
When did you see it?
When did I see it?
Yeah, I'm sure that you've had input into creating it.
We've had, I think, four or five days with it.
He loves it.
But...
I figure you do.
That is not the question.
But...
It's not the question I'll go on record as saying.
A lot of the language is lifted directly from what they proposed.
I figured. Now, we've seen it since 2:15 today.
Yes.
So, we've had about four hours, not even, to see it, and I'm not going to look at it before I have business meetings, and I travel to get here. So, what did you want to accomplish tonight with this?
Yes, I really was wanted to introduce it to you.
Okay.
And give you a look at it and kind of explain a little bit...
Good.
Why it's drafted the way it is. And, you know, there's some specific things to think about. The overall density, we've recommended 12. They recommended 14. The open space, what should be... Should there be a minimum open space? It's different than what's outlined in 1919. And I can email some of these specific questions to you.
Well, we'd like to see, yeah, I would like to see a delta between the two different kinds of uses that are probably the most close to this proposed zone. What's... What do we have? What's proposed, and what's the difference between the others? What do you get here that you don't get in the others? So, it'd be good to see some kind of analysis, comparative analysis.
Yeah, it's really totally different, but I... We can try.
Maybe bullet it.
And they actually did that. I don't know if you remember last...
They did.
With the mixed use.
Some.
Which...
I don't know what I would get out of a delta. I don't know what I would get out of it.
So, if I could, one of the things that we did, and I directed Nora to do, is we don't want to get into kind of what we're doing over in the PC zone, which is each person, each application is writing its own code. It's just getting way too complex. So, we wanted to have a skeleton, if you would, that would capture the big important parts, and I think Nora's done a great job of taking their submittal and trying to frame that. And then, there's still things that we're going to need to work out, and there's still things that are going to be different with each and every application, but it's not like we're starting from scratch and we're rewriting new code and we're going a completely different direction. And so, what we're trying to do is really quickly take their submittal, us taking what we feel is appropriate, applying it in the code as the mixed residential code, kind of side-by-side with our code where we can, and try and do that. So, your request to give a hard analysis of, you know...
Do you foresee that you'll step back and have it more general than what they're asking for, so that they...
They get what they want.
We've already made it more general than what they're asking for. It still applies to more...
We've already done that, developers.
And they can still come in.
It way gone back.
If all the details are on, and we would require it relatively.
All right.
Still allowing flexibility for market changes, maybe sort of longish range.
So, what are your next steps? What would you like to see? Because we need some time to look at this.
Right, we need some time to look at it, and I would say, you know, we'll look at it again.
Okay.
I have a question on your page two. Seats. So, I was wondering, well, the development standards, there's a section, I think it says that, right? Yeah, it says development standards, there's a paragraph there. Will they address the issues of the North Shore concerns, like, that were on page... That was a couple of pages before. Things like max... Maximum lot coverage, minimum lot width, minimum lot frontage. And in their tables, they had a lot of either questions or X's.
That's what I'm trying to find.
What's that?
Those are the...
Okay, so it will be... Okay.
And that detail is the direct reference into what I mentioned earlier in terms of the lot type specific details.
Okay.
So, all of those things that you see, you know, relative to lot standards in one of your other residential zones...
Right.
It is still applicable. It's just it's defined as part of the neighborhood plan with the lot type requirements.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Will any consideration be given that we really are increasing density on the land, agricultural land, and we're going in there and we're really increasing density? They want 14. You had initially said 12. Is there any way we can put in there that when you go above a certain density, that X amount of open space be required, extra be required? Can we do something like that? Because we are, as a city, giving something, and we'd like something in return.
Your open space standards already do that.
Okay.
Oh, I have another question, so...
And our development agreement with them will stipulate anything that might be an anomaly. So, you know, those kinds of things would be addressed as part of their annexation agreement or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you put anything in there about commercial? So, the, you know, the zone can have commercial. It's not required, but it's not also conditional. It's something that is up to the developer. Is there anything in there about that, or...
There is some language, especially how the buildings are trans... But, no, I mean, I'm...
I don't like the "shall" and then "be considered." That's kind of... You know, it's not real definite.
So, you'd like it to be "may be considered"?
Will be.
She likes the "shall."
Yes.
Likes the "shall," but "considered" is a little bit vague.
Yeah, I understand it.
And my comment on that was, this is a mixed residential zone. If you add that commercial component, you've already got zones that do that. This is a different component.
We're not going to argue this commercial thing anymore.
So, I'm just...
We have all set up opinions, and we're going to move on. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Nora. Appreciate your time tonight. Okay, number nine, business item. Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been proposed that we change the meeting time of the planning commission from 6:30 on the 2nd and 4th Thursdays to 6:00 P.M. Do you want to have a discussion on that?
All the dates are for 2017. Is that a typo, or is that just an old calendar? Okay, so, just need to be...
The next one, if we were to make a proposal tonight, would start the very next planning commission meeting. Is that what we've discussed?
I think that's right.
Everybody feel okay with that? City staff, are you okay with that? We all go home a little early, and we don't have to stick around.
We're open to going earlier.
If you want to start at 3:00 in the afternoon, 1:00 in the afternoon, we're good.
What's on the table is 6:00 P.M.
How about 11:00 A.M.?
If you pay for the salaries...
Don't ask her.
No, it will.
City will compensate for lost time to all of our current employers. Okay, so, I will entertain a motion. It is a motionable thing, and it... Our decision... It's not our decision. It is the city council's decision, so...
I move that we recommend to the city council that the planning commission, from this time forward, the meeting time be changed to 6:00 P.M.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a... We're going to take Brianna Brush's second on that one.
The last.
It's her last meeting.
Let me have it.
She gets it. Is there a question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't be late. Don't be late. 6:00 P.M. next time.
Was a little late on that one.
Do I have to say any opposed? Did any oppose? Okay, motion passes unanimously. The motion was Commissioner Steele, and the second was Commissioner Brush. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from March 8?
I have a couple of that. One on the screen.
You need a mic.
I have one comment.
The planning presentations folder or something?
The...
You already have.
Okay, there's... So, there's that... So, line 193 was the planning commission zone. Should be planning community. And then, line 206, it says "planning community." Should be planning community. You got those two? Okay, thanks. That's it for me.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from our meeting on March 8, 2018.
We have a motion, Commissioner Brush.
Second.
We have a second. Just had to do that, huh? Okay, any questions on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Reports of action.
We have one. I think this is what I'm supposed to do.
Yes.
I really don't know what I'm supposed to do, but I prepared one anyway.
You just review it, go through it, and then we make a motion to accept the report of action.
She's not going to say it, but I'm going to. She's done an amazing job. This is a really complex project. She's been turning things around really quickly. She's done an amazing job of really hitting it. I think we've got an amazing team of planners, and so, we can embarrass her while she's focusing on the screen, but thrilled, thrilled to have Nora here on the team.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
Good job, Nora. Thank you very much.
Amen.
Okay, so, I didn't... I don't know exactly what I'm supposed to do, but I prepared, based upon your vote earlier tonight, I prepared a report of action, because this item will be heard by the city council next week. See, I guess we're supposed to go.
Just go down and give us a high-level overview, see who voted or what, and then...
I talked about seeing staff. I summarized some comments. I summarized the applicant presentation, explained that the construction may begin on this village's two parcel first for a smaller medical clinic. Planning commission discussion, the city welcomes this use of patients. Planner Commissioner Steele mentioned that she's uncomfortable with some of the proposed window signs. She likes to be able to see what's going on on the site of building entering. The city has a limited ability to influence the construction of this project. They assured the planning commission that they considered their signage carefully and appreciates the comment by... And then, I altered the findings. And then, in writing, I circled eyes, and then absent for... I had... Will go and sign it already. And then, here, I just added a category. It says village plan.
She wasn't supposed to say that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the report of action dated March 22 for the University of Utah Medical Center Village Plan 2. I almost did it for you.
I'll give a chance to somebody else.
I was going to say, have Brianna do it.
Yep, Brianna.
I already say, all the motions just...
Oh, you're taking it.
Brianna, you just said that. I move to approve the report of action as prepared by Planner Nora Shepherd for the motion approving the U of U Medical Center on March 22.
We have a motion. Second. There's a second from Commissioner Steele. Oh, any question on the motion?
Please, no.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Commission comments.
I have one. Or two.
Brianna Brush had her mic on first.
I have one, too.
And it's her last meeting, so she's going first.
I'll be last. No, no, go ahead. I'll be last.
Okay. Number one, and I... With hesitation, I say this, but we've not been getting our packets on Thursdays like we always did. It's now being Friday, and so, that... I had always set aside time on Thursday nights to review, and by Sunday, I'm done.
That was my comment.
Totally my fault on this packet, because I had all this stuff to do, and I got it done Thursday night, Friday morning.
And I know there's exceptions.
Yeah.
Sometimes when... Now, this time, even if we don't have a complete package, if we could get what is there and ready, that helps.
And you can mark draft all over that thing, so you have a...
Technically, you did have an empty folder on Thursday, so I think we can check that box.
No, even if you had a draft, though, we could see where you're going with it, and then if you had an update, you could let us know. That'd be great.
Yeah, we certainly try and get them to you on time again.
I know you do, but it's been now several months...
Situations, yeah.
That we haven't gotten them.
And it's not just your stuff. It's submissions from our applicants as well.
That's a problem.
And I don't have time on a Friday, I mean, sorry, on a Thursday, to be able to review those. I come directly from work and come here. And now that we've upped it to 6, there's going to be less time.
Well, and that was the rest of my statement, is to get things on the afternoon of our meeting. And I realize you were doing it as a courtesy, but I ended up, you know, it was 20-something pages that I needed to go through, and I didn't, because I didn't get them until a quarter of six.
Where did I expect you to? I mean, really, the purpose of tonight's meeting was just sit. I debated whether to even send it to you. I thought I should, so you'd have it.
Well, and I understand that, but even what came through from Dave and Kevin, I would have liked a little more time to sit and be able to digest it, and I'm sure you you didn't get it from Kevin until today. So I understand all that, but that being said, if we could work to get it a little better.
Noted.
Here, here. Thirded.
And I would like to say to Brianna, it has been such a pleasure to have you there. We are sad to see you leaving, but we wish you the best.
Thank you, and that actually is a good segue into my comment, I just wanted to thank you all for welcoming me to this commission and teaching me how to do things, and it's been a privilege.
Good luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you.
In Idaho. Thank you for your time.
Just as a last ditch, the planner two, it closes Monday.
I think the ship has sailed.
If you guys don't replace some new ones, we're not even gonna have a quorum, so these meetings will stop. So, anyway, I know that we've seen a few resumes come in, and if anybody's listening out there that wants to be part of the planning commission, please apply. All right, uh, directors' report.
Uh, just directly as to that, I think we have five, five or six applications for planning commissioner, and so I think it's probably time to probably sit down with, with Mark and we'll go through what we need to do next and get those out to the mayor. Uh, it is a, an appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of the council.
He's sent me three of them.
Okay.
And I've reviewed them.
Okay, I wanna say we have six, I just got an email today from HR, I wanna say there's five, maybe six now.
I hope that we have some kind of interview process.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. So...
Uh, and to that also, our, we have, we've done first round interviews for Planner One, we have selected four, uh, to enter second interviews on Tuesday. I think we've got some good candidates there, so hopefully the Planner One position will be filled here shortly.
What about the other one?
The other one's open till Monday, we've only had three applications so far on that.
Is there a difference between Planner One and Planner Two and all that?
Uh, Planner One, uh, you basically can somebody right out of college, could be anyway, you know, minimal experience, green, uh, they could have a year experience or so, but obviously it's an entry level position as a Planner One. Planner Two, you wanna have some two or three years' experience then at that point, to kinda know their way around the local government, around codes, planning, zoning, now that's, they're not new to it.
So the number's not, the number of planning commissioner, or planning staff you need, it's, it's an actual skill level?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But if we could use two more, those would probably help, too.
Which one are you gonna apply for?
And I do have another comment.
So I have one more thing, I just wanted to report back to you, Ferry Town Homes. So the city council reviewed Ferry Town Homes and, um, discussed it a lot and discussed the, the architectural standards, and, um, they gave the message to the applicant, that they felt that code meant flat, that it meant flat roofs and what they, they thought, that it showed flat roofs, and if they had to vote for it, they would not, recommendation or vote. So they, they voted to continue the item with the consent of the applicant, and we have received revised plans, it actually has shed roofs, they're still not hugely sloped, they're two and 12. But they're shed roofs, they're metal standing seam shed roofs, and it does make the project look better and less cubic, um, so that's gonna go back to the city council.
So if, if commercial doesn't have a slope requirement, which I just found out today, then why do we require for residential? I mean, cuz if, if you have like a community, you know, like, um, we have, uh, commercial buildings that are, um, that hip roofs, that look kinda like prairie style, but then if we didn't allow that with residential, just because we say it doesn't fit in with the community, but it does fit in with the community because the commercial's that way, you know what I mean? So if we allow cubic kind of buildings for commercial, wouldn't it make sense to allow it for residential as well, so that it fits in better? Or, I mean, what's the reason for it?
Mystery to me.
Okay.
You know, I think that the, the council really, in terms of residential, wants to see more traditional. They gave us some direction to look at there. So, they're not always too...
But for residential, but not for commercial, where we have all our buildings and everything, it's, I don't get it.
I had, I have one more comment. We don't allow signs to take up more than, I think, 25% of a window, and all of a sudden, and then you've heard my, my concerns tonight, Smith has done just that, they have covered everything, so you don't see what you're walking into.
It's safe in there. Pretty good.
Yeah, right, well, I come from...
And they serve pizza.
But, but you did see what was on sale, though, right?
It's what?
You did see the sign what was on sale, though, right? You bought that.
I don't, no, I didn't. No, I, I, and I'll, I'll give you my frame of reference. In California where we lived, women were getting mugged in the middle of the day. And it, there, all kinds of things would happen. When you've got a bank in there, all kinds of things can happen. I'd like to know before I walk in that there's a hostage situation or whatever, and no, we haven't had one yet, and I hope we don't.
Very relevant today.
Yes.
Good idea.
Love seeing it.
Without objection, adjourned.